Oh yeah, it does. It says this session is being recorded, so I think we're good.
Well, ready to start? All right, I want to welcome everybody to our regular scheduled meeting dated September 27, 2021. This time we'll call the meeting order. We begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we'll move on to the approval of the agenda. You were all given the agenda late last week. You've had an opportunity to look it over. This time, we'll take a motion to accept that unless somebody has a change.
I'd like to make a motion to add item 6D, City Council Board and Commission Appointments.
I'll second that.
So, this is a motion to approve the agenda, adding item 6D by Councilmember Schlieder, seconded by Councilmember Swanberg. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? I'm sorry, Mr. Sullivan.
Aye.
Thank you. Anybody opposed? Otherwise, we'll accept the agenda for tonight. Moving on to the consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda are considered routine, and they have been made available to the City Council at least two days in advance of the meeting. The items will be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the agenda and considered in normal sequence. At this time, I'm going to ask that our city administrator, Mr. Krugel, you want to review these with us?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor Kirby, members of City Council. The first item we have are the City Council meeting minutes from the last meeting on September 13, 2021. Second item is dispersment approvals through today, September 27. Items of note for dispersments is we had our second half property and casualty payment to the League of Minnesota Cities Insurance Trust for just over $77,000. We had our second half payment for the 2010 healthcare bond. That's $214,000. That is funded through conduit financing, so that's something that we get paid back by the hospital for that bond payment. We had that pay application that was approved for WW blacktopping at the last meeting, some engineering from Bolton and Mank totaling $41,000, a little over that. That Water Department vehicle that was approved on the 13th was purchased from Apple Ford for just under $50,000. If you remember, that was actually about a $13,000 savings from what we thought we were going to get. We ended up finding a vehicle that met our needs that was a little bit less as far as the service body goes, so we saved a little bit of money there. And then our sales tax payment for August was $48,843. So those dispersments totaled $923,435.7. Next, we have the LaSour Lions Club has requested the use of the parking lot, kind of that same area where Pizza Ranch is, that they've used in past years for their Christmas tree sale. That's on here for approval. We have the proclamation of October 15th being the Pregnancy and Infancy Loss Remembrance Day. We've done this, I believe, the last four years. And then we have surplus property declaration, which only had a couple of items on there. I believe there is an Itron item that we no longer need, and then some miscellaneous filters that we no longer need for public works. And that's all we have on consent agenda tonight. And I'll entertain any questions if there are any. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I do have one.
Please.
Go ahead. Jasper, would you please explain a little bit about the candy expenditure by the Fire Department?
Wow. Yep. Thank you very much, Noel, for that. I did say I would talk about that. So you may have noticed that there's candy expenditure in the dispersments, a reimbursement request for the Fire Department. The Fire Department goes to parades throughout the summer, and in those parades, they throw candy. One of the things that they have to purchase that candy, and one of the things that they do is they receive donations throughout the year for things like this, and basically run those expenditures through the city. There will be, I don't have a formal list of all of the donations that we've received this year, but one thing that we're going to start doing is formally accepting the list of donations that the Fire Department receives as a City Council annually, so that we have kind of a running tally each year of what we receive for donations. So I think this expenditure was just over $1,000 for candy for the entire summer of parades, which was four parades, I know. But know that this is running through the city expenditures and is funded through donations that the Fire Department receives through various people and things that they do for fundraisers.
Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else? Any questions, comments, concerns for our city administrator? If not, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Don't move, Sullivan.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Swanberg. Any other discussion, comments, concerns? Otherwise, all those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Sullivan?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? The ayes have it. Moving on to public comment, which provides an opportunity for the public to address the council on items that are not on the agenda. Comments will be limited to five minutes per person. Persons wishing to make a comment must sign up in advance of the meeting on the sheet provided and identify themselves, providing their name and address. I think Mr. Swanberg is going to pull the sheet over. We have two gentlemen here today. Mr. Huntington is here joining us, Mark Huntington and Mr. Dave Shiber. And we have one sign in. That would be you, Mr. Shiber. So at this time, if you would like to approach the council, you're welcome to.
My name is Dave Shiber. I live 306 Market Street, LaSour. I am here tonight, gentlemen, to discuss the block of Vine Street between Market and Cap Card. There's been episodes with the city for several years on that portion. And I feel it's time that the matter gets addressed. I have obtained a plot of that area. The city owns 50 feet of property. From the edge of my lot to the adjacent lot, it's 50 feet. With the construction this summer, there has been several trucks, even semis, that use that block as a way to get around. I had to address the matter with a couple city staff. Lo and behold, it was transferred from one city staff department to another city staff department. The matter was reviewed. I was told that I was right. The road closed sign was moved. I have spoken with two council members on the care of the grass portion up there. At one time, probably three years ago, the city informed me that the city would be taking care of their grass. I'm sorry to tell you, it got done twice and then it stopped. I have communicated with you, Mayor, Mr. Kirby, I believe either last winter or the winter before. I believe it was last winter because you just took over the first of the year. Anyway, the plow job is always really poor. I have a driveway that goes into my backyard. In order to me to gain access to that driveway, I must come off a cap card. With the way that the street is plowed, it makes it very hard to turn in there. You have to turn in due to the slipperiness of the hill. You have to approach it from the top and turn in. When that is plowed very poorly, like it has been, I slid a couple times. One time, I had a concern that I was going to go over the edge and end up in the neighbor's yard. Now, another property owner in that area has blacktopped a driveway that is there on their property. A portion of that, which is on city property, and there is a big lip. Viewing that area today, I see that street narrowing down all the time due to lack of maintenance. So I'm here tonight to try and get this addressed.
Is that it?
Yeah, that's it. That's why I'm here.
Thank you for your time here. Our city administrators listening, our councils here listening, we will review these concerns of yours, and we will address them as needed.
Mr. Kirby, if I could quick, I also would like to add.
You sure can. You've got about a minute and a half.
In communications today with a department head on this, they said it's not my job. It's not my department. I feel that is the wrong way to be. It should not be a department, this department, that department, that other department. I feel the city departments should act as a team. If I communicate something to a department, it is the wrong department. I feel that department should be able to communicate with the other department or the other city staff and have the matter addressed. And that's it, and I do thank you for your time.
Thank you, Dave Shiber. I appreciate you stopping in, and we will look into these matters. Thank you very much. You have a good evening. Nobody else signed in, so with that said, we will move on to the regular agenda then, starting with the administrative fines and ordinances. Regular agenda, item 6A. Administrator Krugel, you want to review this with us, please?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Kirby, members of City Council. Before you tonight is the potential first reading of an ordinance that would allow the city to levy administrative fines for various city code violations. I have a little summary. Rich, if you can go to the next slide. Basically, we've already adopted this process for our rental license ordinance, so if somebody has a rental property, that they don't get a rental license, this is the process that we use to try to get them to be in compliance. And at the end of the day, the thing that we're trying to accomplish is really, this gives city staff another tool to try to get people to be in compliance with city code items that need to be addressed. So I'll just kind of go through summary. There's a lot of information in the ordinance itself, kind of going through it. If there's questions, I can answer those at the end. But really, what we're looking at tonight is potential waiving of that first reading of the ordinance, direction to bring this forward at a future City Council meeting. And then at a future City Council meeting, consider possible adoption of the ordinance, and then that ordinance would then go into effect seven days after we publish it. So I'll go through the summary of this, and then I can answer any questions that anybody may have. So as I mentioned before, the city currently has an administrative fine ordinance related to the rental housing. What this ordinance does is actually changes that rental housing reference to rental housing ordinance to just reference this one location, so we don't have duplicate locations where this is located. So this ordinance would then be the authority to levy those administrative fines for all aspects of the code, including the rental housing licensing ordinance. The proposed amendments involve Section 30.08 of the City Code, adding procedures for the administrative fines. Again, that purpose is to gain compliance for the city code enforcement issues. The process involves the issuance of a ticket in an appeals process, and that's very important to understand as a City Council because there will be a component where I need some input from the City Council if we want to have an administrative hearing judge, or if we want to have City Council act as that person or that authority. So that's something I need a little direction on that we can add in the second reading if we go down that route. So, and this process is used in a lot of other communities within the state of Minnesota. So this is something that we're just kind of coming up with. This is something that a lot of communities use as far as another tool to gain compliance. The goal is to really avoid issuing the ticket, so really working with the property owners to make sure that they're communicating with the city and doing what they need to do to become compliant. You know, I've talked to a couple council members about this, and really, we don't want to issue the ticket. This isn't something that we're doing to be a revenue generator. The ticket issuance is kind of the last step in the whole process, and hopefully, going through the process, we can work with that property owner to gain compliance and not have to issue any administrative fines. So the appeals process would involve the use of a hearing examiner through delegation by the City Council. So that's where I need a little direction. So that hearing examiner is an independent person or persons. What I would recommend is having a pool of people that we can use if there is an appeals process that's requested, just to avoid any scheduling conflicts and to do things as expedient as we can. Have a group of, you know, three basically attorneys that would be able to hear this appeals process. The other alternative is to have City Council be that hearing authority. So we went through this process, I believe, last year, and had held basically, I don't know, it's kind of like a courtroom scenario situation where we have both sides talking about the issues, and then City Council ultimately makes a decision on this. What the hearing examiner would do is look at both sides, you know, in a private setting, and then they would make a decision based on the facts of the case. So that's something that City Council, I need a little direction on. If we want to change that, City Council can then be that authority, or they can delegate it. And what I would ask is that you would just delegate that if you do choose to go down that route, delegate me to find those individuals because, you know, it would be unfortunate if I had to go to City Council and find a new hearing examiner in a timely manner, you know, we meet only every two weeks. So something like that would be something that I would request that I have access to be able to do. And then a failed appeal through the hearing examiner could be further appealed into the court system. So if somebody appeals, and then that appeal goes in the favor of the city as opposed to the person bringing the appeal, there's other steps that they can go and use to kind of get their case heard by somebody else. So it's not a be-all, end-all situation with the hearing examiner. It's just another step. And those steps are important if it does go to a court, that, you know, we do give these things due diligence that they deserve in order to remedy them. Again, ideally without having to levy any certifying. Rich, can you go to the next slide, please? So you can see in here, we have a fee schedule, first offense, second offense, third offense, fourth offense, and then fifth offense and beyond. Those things basically double. And those offenses could be per day technically, but in reality, the way that the situation arises is that once an administrative fine, a ticket, we'll call it, is levied against somebody, they have 10 days to pay it. So really, the time between first offense, second offense, at the most, because of that procedural item, could be 10 days or 11 days between each offense, allowing that individual to either pay the fine or remedy the situation that they have related to city code. So as you can see, there's hopefully a financial incentive to become code compliant. Again, I'll reiterate this numerous times, is that it's not our intent to fine people. Our intent is to try to get people to be compliant with the city code. So I'll kind of talk a little bit about those procedures that are outlined in the ordinance. So code compliance officer, so that would be myself or my designee. So for certain situations, I'll give you an example. So if it's building code related, my designee would be the building official. So the building official would handle the building code issues. You know, zoning, that would be likely the community development director if that position's filled. You know, obviously, if that position isn't filled, that would fall onto me as the main code compliance officer. But really, what that is, is that person, that code compliance officer, and I'll kind of go through a scenario, is the initial contact point for making contact with the individual outside just the normal verbal, hey, you know, you needed to get a permit for this, and then all of a sudden you don't get a permit, you build it on your own. That code compliance officer would make that first initial formal contact with that person or property owner. So in that letter that the code compliance officer would send to the property owner, would include the code offense, so what part of the code is in violation, the location of the code offense, you know, the required corrective action, so what do you need to do to correct the code offense, the length of time to get that into compliance. And in that ordinance, it says that it's no more than 20 days. There is an extension period that we can allow up to 30 days, more or past that 20 days. And that's up to the discretion of the code compliance officer. And really what that is, is, hey, you know, you need to do X, Y, or Z on your property. Hey, I can't get a contractor to come in here until, you know, three weeks from now. You know, I need to get an extension to make sure that I'm in compliance. You know, as long as that individual's working with the city to ensure that code compliance will be happening, we want to be able to have that flexibility to extend that. If immediate compliance is required due to the existence of public health or safety condition, the code compliance officer can make that an immediate request, so they can make that determination. Let's say there's a house that's, well, this is kind of an extreme example, but a house that might fall over into public right away, you know, something like that, we would expedite that as much as we can to try to make that property owner if they're not willing to become compliant. In that situation, we would likely, you know, that's like, again, an extreme situation, we would likely hold a special City Council meeting and abate that immediately so that we can get somebody in there and do some emergency corrective action. So, but if there's the existence of a public health or safety concern, then that code compliance officer has the ability to expedite all those processes. Rich, you want to hit the next slide, please? So yeah, again, up to 30 days additional to achieve the compliance for the code compliance officer. And then if we have a repeat offender within a 12-month period, the compliance letter isn't required. So if there's, you know, let's say somebody that has required or that received a code compliance letter, and they've remedied that, and they're kind of on notice at that time, within a 12-month period, then we can kind of jump to the citation issuance. But know that that's an option that we can do, you know. I want to stress communication is always paramount here, and trying to talk to the property owners and remedy these things before, you know, letters are sent or fines are issued or tickets are issued. That's the number one goal. So let's talk about, once that letter, you know, the letter is issued, let's say you have 20 days to comply, you do not comply, or you just ignore the letter altogether, then we go to the next step, which is the citation issuance. So once that property is noncompliant of an issue, then the code compliance officer may issue a citation. So that citation shall state the following items: the nature of the code offense, the time and date of the code offense, the civil penalty per that fee schedule, and then how do you pay the civil penalty? You know, you can come into City Hall and make a payment that way. You can, you know, possibly pay online if we have that available. Just how do you actually pay that? And then also, how do you contest the citation? So this is the point where that contested, where you can contest that case. And then it's either the City Council hears that contested case, or we bring in that hearing officer to do that. Rich, you want to hit the next slide, please? So, and then the civil penalty or request for hearing must be before the hearing, or before the hearing must occur within 10 days of the issuance of the citation. So you basically have 10 days to either pay the civil penalty or to request that there's an appeal. And there's a charge for the appeal, so there's a $75 charge to appeal the citation. And if the hearing officer or the city council or whatever we choose decides in favor of the person bringing the appeal, then that $75 is refunded. And then also, if there is a late payment, so let's say somebody does not pay within the 10 days, so whatever that citation is, there's a late payment fee of 10% one time. And then that's important to notice because of the next step is if somebody just doesn't pay their citation and they have this civil penalty on their property, what are the next steps? How do we recoup those costs? And that's through the assessment of unpaid civil penalties through the assessment of those penalties that have accumulated over time during our normal delinquent accounts process, which we're going to, you're going to see actually the next meeting for the 2020 year. So we would go through the same process, and that person would then have the ability to appeal to City Council to either reduce, waive, do something different to those civil penalties if it gets to that point. Now, you can see there's, you know, obviously, a bunch of different steps here that people have an opportunity to remedy this, and ideally, they remedy it earlier on in the process. So, but if there are unpaid assessments, then that would go through that delinquent account process that City Council is familiar with, where we go through that every year. So we would assess that then to the property owner. We would then, the property owner would pay that through their property taxes. If they chose not to pay that, then their property taxes would be delinquent, and then, you know, they potentially lose their house because they're delinquent on their property taxes. So, you know, that's one of the options. The other way is we can continue to levy new subsequent administrative fines. We can use, go forward with criminal proceedings, or we could initiate any other enforcement action authorized by law. So I'm not exactly sure what that means, but that just kind of, there's some mechanism that the state of Minnesota opens up for us to recoup these costs, and we would be able to do that as authorized by law. Rich, you want to hit the next slide, please? So tonight, what we're looking for is we're recommending City Council waive the first reading of ordinance number 593, and direct staff to bring forward any City Council requested changes. So right now, as it stands in the ordinance, we have in there that there will be an administrative hearing person that will hear any appeals. If City Council wants to change that to say, let's say, bring it to City Council, now would be the time to do it, and then we would have that included in the ordinance for the second reading, whenever that would be October 11. And then we would conduct that second reading and then consider the adoption of the ordinance. I want to just make two notes regarding this. So if adopted, the ordinance would go into effect seven days after it's published in the paper. So, you know, likely, let's say we would adopt this on October 11. We would then publish it in the paper the following week, so probably around October 15. It wouldn't go into effect October until October 22. At that time, you know, if we have anybody that is falling into the noncompliance zone for this, we would start the process. So whatever we've done in the past, all the letters that we've sent to people that aren't compliant, you know, that process would start over following this ordinance, and we would go through the process as if they were, you know, a newly identified not compliant individual. One other thing I want to note that if the waiving of the reading of an ordinance, so if we, you know, let's say there's a motion in a second to waive the reading of the first reading of this ordinance, it's required to be unanimous. If it's not unanimous, the actual ordinance needs to be read aloud to conduct the first reading. So that's just a point of order note that I want to make sure everybody knows, not to deter anybody from voting against this, but if it isn't unanimous, our city code states that we need to actually read the ordinance, which is in the packet. So a lot of information, really, I want to drive home, this is just another tool. And in all honesty, we're having some trouble with a couple different property owners to gain compliance through our normal mechanisms, and really, it's related to building code enforcement more so than nuisance or zoning. You know, nuisance and zoning, they seem to work themselves out through our normal process, which still exists, that abatement process will still be in play, where we can bring it to City Council and get an abatement order, and then we'll get a search warrant, and then we can access the property to abate it if that's the route that we have to do, and we have done that in the past, but very infrequently. That's still a mechanism that we can use to help abate properties. This is just another tool that we hope that can help facilitate code compliance within the city. So a lot of information. I know, are there any questions from City Council about this ordinance?
I think Councilmember Schlieder has a question.
Couple questions. First of all, could you give us an example of some of the types of general code enforcement that could be on this new ordinance? And then how many tickets do you anticipate are going to be going out per year, and how many appeals per year?
Yeah, I will use an example. I can start off there. Let's say somebody builds a deck. Let's say somebody builds a deck and we tell them that they need to get a permit and they don't get a permit and they just build a deck. And they're using the deck and and there's, you know, we can write all the letters we want in the world, but they're still, they're not, they're not listening, they're not complying, they didn't get a building permit, they didn't get that deck inspected per our city code and per the international building code. You know, we really don't have any additional recourse other than just to say, well, we know there's an illegal deck built over here. You know, hopefully, nobody gets hurt on it and it's constructed correctly. We technically can't access the property. With using this, we would have a mechanism to kind of make, you know, some sort of, make it a financial incentive to communicate with the city, allow us to go in and inspect it per our city code. So that that's an example, you know, any other building code issues that you might have where somebody's just not being a party to be compliant with or or something like that, that would be an example of the building code side. You know, if there'd be a nuisance violation of some sort, you know, we typically have gone down the path of bringing nuisance violations to city council following a short window where we we try to be compliant. This could be another step, let's say somebody you know, is it has a car parked on a nonapproved surface, right? That's another one that we get quite a bit that we resolve through just communication with the with the property owner. But let's say somebody says, well, I'm not going to communicate with the city. What are they going to do? You know, are they going to bring it to city council and have the city council say they, we need to tow my vehicle out my property? Or we can use this as a tool to say, yeah, we're gonna just levy administrative fines against you until you remedy this. That'd be another example. So the second question, based on the the number of complaints that we get right now and the number of noncompliance, I'd I'd say, you know, in my time here at the city, which is roughly five years, it's a little over five years now. You know, I would say a couple of times a year, really, is what we're looking at, where we have, you know, a couple of people that are just not doing what they're supposed to do. And then that would be, you know, and as far as the citations go, I would say, hopefully, after one issuance, they they realize that we're we're serious and they're going to just be compliant. Because at the end of the day, I don't want to be issuing a bunch of these, these administrative fines. We really just want people to be compliant with with the city code that that city council has adopted. So I would say right now, it's only for a few, couple of people, two to three people, maybe a year would would potentially get threatened with this and, you know, maybe, maybe one to two a year would maybe actually even get a fine. I don't know, it might be zero. But this is really, it's, you know, the mechanism is there to to try to make people be be compliant through another tool in our toolbox.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor. Jasper, this is Noel. When I first read this proposed ordinance, I would have understood or would, I believed, reading it, that the hearing officer would simply be somebody who is volunteering for that position, not necessarily an attorney. You use the term attorney, which clicked into my mind. Maybe you're thinking we're going to compensate this person in some way. I would prefer that it simply be a citizen appointed to this role. They may or may not have that legal qualification. Would you comment on that first, please?
Yes, I I'd be happy to. So so really, you know, we're trying to eliminate all local bias with this. So, and that's one thing that I think other communities have learned, because other communities have appointed individuals like a priest or a pastor or something like that. And really, you know, your ties to the community, you know, I shouldn't say it might make you biased, but they might make you biased with what's actually going on. You might know the person, you'd hope not, but there's always that that possibility. Having an appointed individual, look at this, whereas like an administrative hearing appointee, that's an attorney, they're 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 subject to a code of ethics. They're, you know, supposed to weigh in the way that code of ethics reads. They're supposed to be ethical and make good decisions. And the idea would be that they're not part of the community and they're looking at it in an unbiased manner. Now, it's totally up to city council how we'd want to proceed with that. If if we would want somebody to be local with that, we definitely could, but, you know, with those nuances, I just kind of stated. The other thing is that the city council themselves could actually be that 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 hearing authority and they could, they could continue to be that hearing authority and and people could appeal and bring that directly to city council. So we really have options, the option that that we have in the ordinance, I feel is the most unbiased or has the most potential for unbiases. There's less connection to the to the to the community and really, it's it, you know, the the analysis of if the appeal is going to fail or or proceed is based on the facts of the case.
Jasper, if I may, with that much said, I still think it could be done internally, but I understand the reasoning for having someone who is not a part of this community be the hearing officer. It strikes me, if you're going to have someone do that who's not a member of the community, we should compensate that person for what they do. With that in mind, I would suggest that in the proposed ordinance, section one D as in delta, there should be a sentence after paragraph two, which currently reads, the hearing officer shall be neutral, a neutral third party appointed by the city council and shall preside at the hearing and make any judgment as authorized. I would think we should add a sentence, something to this effect. Compensation for hearing for for a hearing officer shall be in accordance with the fee schedule established by the city council. That gives us flexibility in how much we set it when, just like any other fee. In other words, we'd have a, we'd have the, in the in the ordinance, it would indicate that we are going to compensate. I don't know what your reaction to that is, but I'd like to hear.
Yeah, if I may, Mayor and City Council, there there is an expectation that we would pay this administrative fine or this administrative hearing person. It's not explicitly set in here, so I think stating it could be could be more clear. You know, but but, you know, we're not expecting this person to do this for free. You know, the one, the one, I could see one problem with with having it tied to our, you know, I don't know if you intended it to be tied to the the legal fee schedule that we have for like our city attorney or if it's just something that that city council says, yep, we'll pay, we'll pay an attorney a hundred and fifty dollars an hour to be the administrative hearing officer. You know, or something like that. We could do that and then we could have that be just part of part of the 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 fee schedule that we adopt each year as as city council and say, you know, here's what it is, you know, and then we can try to find administrative hearing officers. So I think it could be clear, if you could, I was just pulling up the ordinance itself in word word form. If you could kind of repeat what you were requesting being added and I can kind of take some notes, that'd be appreciated.
I didn't write it down, but it was, it would be something to this effect. Hearing officers shall be compensated in accordance with the fee schedule established by the council. And to keep it simple, keep it where we have flexibility with it. That would be my suggestion. I do have one other issue if we can move on.
Yeah, I have that note now.
Thank you. In my experience with other communities, if someone does not comply with a building code, they build an illegal deck, they put an extension on their home. I've seen it happen where they're told either fix it, make it in compliance, pay the pay the permit fee, et cetera, et cetera. Or you will be required to tear it down. That's the ultimate way to get compliance. And I don't want people with decks where it's going to fall down and kill someone or hurt someone. So do we have that kind of authority to actually basically tell them to desist and remove? We must have it somewhere and if we don't, we should.
And so we do, we do have that authority as a city council. And you do, you probably hear about the the cases that make the headlines on on the news and and TV that so and so, some city is going to try to make somebody tear something down. You know, that happens occasionally, but at the end of the day, really, what happens more commonly is that the if it does get to the court system, they basically say, work this out, city and private party, you know, work this out. And if you're not compliant, there's got to be a process to to get to that point. And really, if you think about this in the grand scheme of things, this ordinance piece that you're looking at tonight is part of that process, because at the end of the day, if somebody just doesn't want to be compliant, they're not paying, they're they're fine and they're, you know, it's going to end up in in court. And and they're going to look at, well, what was the process the city followed to to try to get this person to be compliant? And and was there communication attempts and things like that? Really, this is just another insert of of a series of steps that, you know, give us direction on how to communicate with a with a noncompliant property. So we do have that authority, but they do, it it happens very infrequently where it actually gets to that point where you can say, yep, I'm going to tear this down. But they really will look at, you know, what's the process you got to that point before you actually try to tear down a structure, if that makes sense. So we do have the authority, this is just kind of another step in that process if it gets to that point.
Well, I'll sleep better tonight knowing that. Thank you.
Any other questions or concerns? Before we vote on this issue, I just want to ask Jasper or even Noel, you made the proposal. Is this going to be in the second reading, these changes that you?
I don't know what
for tonight's
I have no problem incorporating it, but
I would be more comfortable accepting this the way it is and then you make those cha- changes, Mr. Krugel, and then we can review those.
Yeah, so so, yeah, sorry, sorry for that. So typically, you know, I'll take direction without a motion or anything like that with with the with the requested language. We'll add it into the second reading, we can read it at the second reading and then if we want to change it or take it out or we just say, ah, it doesn't feel right, then we can do that at that time and then and then whatever we come up with after the, well, for the second reading and ultimate adoption, that's what gets set in 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 the ordinance. So right now, I have a note in there to just indicate that the hearing officer must be compensated according to the city council fee schedule.
And we'll see that in the October eleven review?
If if that's the direction to bring it forward on October eleventh, correct, yes.
Okay, so with that said, we'll move ahead with waiving. Looking for a motion to waive the first reading ordinance number five nine three and direct staff to bring forward the city council request changes in ordinance to the October eleventh meeting. Conduct the second reading and consider adoption of the ordinance. Anybody, any discussion before we ask for a vote? Oh, I I need somebody to make a motion, I'm sorry.
Mr. Mayor also move.
Thank you, Mr. It's been seconded by Mr. Swanberg. Any other discussion, comments, concerns? Otherwise, all those in favor? Mr. Sullivan? Anybody opposed? The ayes have it. Moving on to item number six B, no parking resolution, West Ferry Street. Administrator Krueger, you want to review this with us?
Yes, sir, Mayor Kirby, members of city council. We have a resolution here that would, as the map in the in the packet indicates, make no parking along West Vine Street, or sorry, West Ferry Street, we're just talking about Vine a little bit. West Ferry Street. And and we can, as a city council, they can designate the streets and 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 public places in in the best interest of the public. So I have Rich, Rich is up at the podium right now, I can see. He'll give a summary of this and ultimately what we're looking for is consideration to adopt the resolution that that was in the packet. So I'll hand it off to Rich.
Director Kachera, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Yes, per the city code, section seventy-one oh-two, the city cow, city code allow city council to designate areas for parking with parking time limits and durations. So another step of this, we are asking for year-round enforcement of the two to eight AM parking. We call it muscle memory, that way, when it comes to snow season, it's not a shocker. There's certain people that would be using this area, currently use this area before eight AM and we don't want to have them, we're trying to avoid giving them tickets if we can get a, get the word out early and get them trained not to park in that area. As you, as in the packet, you see the area, so it's about a half a block distance. As the new Main Street is coming together, you see there is a lot of concrete, there is, will be a lot of snow. All that snow will need to come down the new section of Main Street and down that area ferry into the parking lot to get piled until it gets hauled out. The reason we are asking for the no parking in that area is to limit the chances of a of snow hitting a car, a snow moving vehicle, hitting a vehicles, anything like that. We're trying to just eliminate the potential for a hazard. Letters were given to both of the business owners to the north on Friday. I heard, I heard nothing back from either one of them. And so, and another thing is both their hours start at eleven o'clock, open to the public. So I don't see this as a big influencer as the back parking lot is still open.
Who are those two businesses?
Max Green Mill Bar and Bar and Grill.
Mayor Member Sullivan?
Yeah, go ahead.
Hey, Rich, is there a specific reason why we're doing eight o'clock versus say like a seven o'clock? And is it just the north side of that street?
Yes, so currently, our snow operations begin about five o'clock. We figure staff will be getting down to that area about five thirty to six o'clock. Obviously, Ferry Street, I would say, you know, from second goes that way, the snow load goes that way. We also take South Main Street, so the half a block south going by wise furniture, buildings and those areas. All that snow goes that way, so we already have quite a bit of snow going that will take us to about seven. We're figuring getting us into Main Street, five thirty to six, so we can get the snow off the road and then we can let the private parties push their snow out into the road so we can get that out. We will need that extra hour to get that accomplished.
Okay, and do we, you said you notified the business owners to the north, but obviously, we do have businesses to the south there that I know park on that side as well. And now we're going to be with the addition of a cafe right across the street there. Do we have concerns with that? Obviously, that's morning operations as well.
I personally do now, because it's four to five spots and like I said, the back lot will be open. It's just a reinforcement tool. Most know that when the roads are open, you can park there. They start parking there when that's open. Obviously, we have a whole another section. We have many thousand square feet, a hundred by three hundred square feet of snow now additional to take through that area. And with that, I'm asking for council to approve resolution twenty twenty-one oh thirty-nine for the limited of parking hours for the north side of West Ferry Street from South Main Street going west to the parking lot. Any questions?
Anybody, Mr. Kachera?
Picture exactly where we're talking about here.
What soda machine is next to the green mill?
Say that again.
Soda machine next to the green mill, you've got stairs that go up to the, that's right there.
Mr. Swanberg, I think it's hard to see, but there's two stars on there. Can you see those stars? That, yeah, they almost look like trees or umbrellas. That's that's the area he's talking about. No, no, I mean, it's hard to see.
So the area would be when the new Main Street opens, when you get around the turn.
Director Kachera, just to be clear, this, this is all year round, correct? It isn't, it isn't just during the winter months.
I I would recommend all year round, just as I said, to build muscle memory, so it's not a snow season, just to remember, oh, in snowy events, I got to stay off of here. Because, like I said, our our snow, when we declare a snowy emergency, it says until the roadway is cleared. Well, that roadway may be cleared, but we may not be done pushing snow from other areas through that area. Yes.
So if somebody's there in the middle of summer, they'll get a ticket?
They could. I would, I would hope that law enforcement work with them and educate them in the, I call, educate them in the off season.
Very good, but in the winter months, it could be detrimental, yeah, especially during a snowstorm. Very good. Any other questions for Director Kachera? If not, the recommended action is before you gentlemen, the city council is looking to approve resolution R twenty twenty-one dash zero three nine. Thank you, Mr. Lozey.
Second.
Mr. Swanberg seconded, thank you. Any other discussion, concerns, comments? If not, all those in favor? Mr. Sullivan? Anybody opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kachera. Moving on to regular agenda, item six C is in cat, twenty twenty-one Q two and Q quarter one and quarter two financial reports. I believe Mr. Roby, is he with us tonight or is it just you, Mr.?
I am here.
Oh, Joe, welcome, welcome. I don't know if you or Mr. Krugel is going to lead off there, but I'll leave it up to you two gentlemen.
Yeah, well, thank you, Mayor, members of city council. Yeah. Well, thank you, Mayor, members of city council. Joe is here. So I, this is Joe's first Q one and, and Q two financial report that he's done with the city. So I'll be here to, if it's all right, Joe, if you need me to hop in, you just let me know. But I'll be here to, to offer any additional information. But I will have Joe go through this. There's a lot of, a lot of stuff going on here in the city. And yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll just talk about it. So I'll hand it off to Joe.
Thanks, Jasper. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, members of council. Apologies for not being able to join you in person tonight. But I know this isn't a background. This is an actual beautiful city of La Sura Sunset behind me. So, can everyone hear me all right?
Very well.
All right, good. So again, thanks for, for allowing me some time on the agenda tonight. We're going to talk through Q one and Q two. Now, of course, we're several months removed now from both Q one and Q two. And thank you for bearing with us. We had to get through audit and with the number of projects that we have going on within the city. We needed, I wanted to make sure that we were accurately reflecting on both the Q one and Q two numbers, as we had many moving parts and, and, and new items coming, coming, coming financial quarter in particular are within this occasion of 2020 B bonds and 2021 A bonds. So we'll start with Q one and, and then roll into Q two. If you have questions throughout, by all means, just, I will say before.
Oh, can we, can we, can you turn off your camera? Because you're breaking up. We're hoping if you turn off your camera, the audio will be clear. Thank you.
Yes, and I won't take offense to that, Rich. Thank you.
I thought you were talking to me, Rich, about my camera.
Is that better?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So before I launch in, there, as Jasper mentioned, there's a lot of detail here and a lot of numbers. And for those who have been on council for any period of time, you'll, you'll recognize these slides. It's all being presented in the manner consistent with prior year quarterly reports. I would just like to say, though, overall, there are a couple of thematic elements here. And one is that we've got a lot of projects going on at the city. So in particular around our bonding projects. And as we do, we'll see some, you know, the addition of new funds to manage expenses for those. And as to also service the debt for those. So don't be surprised when you see some new funds jump on here from time to time. And regarding the enterprise funds, which would be our water, sewer, electric, and then the community center fund, which isn't technically an enterprise fund, but we do call it out separately. The overarching theme for Q one and Q two is lower operational expend, expenditures and lower overall revenues. So without further ado, we'll go right into, to Q one. So overall, the general first quarter 21, we saw overall normal operations. You can see that in March of 2021, our overall cash balance in the general fund did drop significantly from February to March. That's, it's not unusual, as you can look back historically, to see that the general fund cash balance does decrease in the, in the first two quarters of, of the year. That's primarily due to some front loaded expenditures that we have for things like insurance and subscriptions to, for tech, not only technology, but some other services that are payable in the first half of the year. But also most importantly is we don't receive our first property tax settlement from La Sura County until May or June every year. And so first quarter was, was no different in that regard. We saw cash balance in the general fund drop from January to March. What is notable in March of 2021 is if you recall, at the very end of March, March 30th, the city closed on the purchase of the Main Street, South Main Street right of way from building good downtowns. And as part of that purchase, there was some construction, excuse me, not construction, some demolition costs that the city paid for, reimbursed building good downtowns for, I should say. So it was a 640,000 plus dollar expenditure that hit the books just at the end of March. And, and that's, you know, a very unique one time expense that the city incurred, which, which really led to that cash balance dropping to that low mark below $200,000 that you see on the chart in front of you. We did get reimbursed partially from the EDA as expected for $300,000. But that reimbursement did not come through until April. So it was just a more or less a function of timing. And as, as we get into Q two in a few minutes here, you'll see that the cash balance does refund quite nicely by the middle of second quarter. Next slide, please. Here's the overall income statement for the general fund. Oh, sorry. Was there a question?
No, proceed.
Overall income statement for the first quarter for the general fund. Lot of numbers here, but overall, as I mentioned earlier, revenues are down compared to budget, but that is entirely due to the fact that we don't get any LGA from the state. We don't get any property tax payments until typically May, June, and July. So it's not uncommon for our first quarter revenue numbers to be below budget. When we do budget, for example, when we look at our, the second column budget through three 31, our total budget is, was $541,786. Just to note that when we budget at, at the city, it's not, I would say, historically, we've budgeted an annual budget, and then that's divided by 12 to get a monthly, a monthly budget. We don't, so in other words, we, we don't actually expect $541,000 in, in, in revenue to come in, in that first quarter. But we, we just annualized the budget. And that's been done historically. So yes, we were under budget in first quarter, but that's entirely expected. Overall, we were over, over budget in our expenditures in the first quarter, but that was almost entirely due to the, the expenditure, as previously mentioned, for the purchase of the Main Street right away and the construct, demolition and construction expend, expenditures to building good downtowns for South Main and the mall project, which all hit at the very end of March. Next slide, please. So this is our overall cash balance. This is the most fun slide to look through on a PowerPoint deck. So I apologize for that. But this is an issue of full transparency. This is our full cash on hand for every fund at the end of the first quarter. So we ended the first quarter with 11.36 million dollars broken out across the, the various funds that you see here. The, yeah, question?
No, no.
No. Okay. I must be hearing something, the widget in the system. You'll see here, there are a handful of new funds, as I mentioned earlier, the 325 and 425 funds are for the servicing and the tracking of expenditures for the 2020 B or the CASA 22 project funds, 326 and 426 are for debt service and expenditures for the 2021 A bond project, which again, I I call it here, Main Street, South, the plow truck and the, the fire engine as well. And then new this quarter is our 701 fund. So at the very beginning of 2021, the city established a fund exclusively to track IT expenditures. In prior, previous years, it had been buried, I shouldn't say buried, but it had been included under data, it's called data processing expenses under each of the funds. And recognizing that IT expenses, for the most part, are incurred across most funds. Fund 701 was established to track those expenditures. So you'll see those as Fund 701 appearing on, on these charts going forward. We've already talked about, a little bit about the general fund, and we'll talk about the enterprise funds. I do want to call out the community center fund, which from a year to year standpoint, from March 2020 to March 2021, the community center fund actually moved in a slightly positive direction. I'm afraid to say that's the last of the positive community center cash news that I have for this evening. So, but we picked up about $14,000 year to year in the community center fund as of March 2021. And it was down year to date, looking at December 31st to March 31st. Next slide, please. Moving on to our water fund. As I mentioned earlier, and this is going to be consistent through all of our utility enterprise funds, the, the name of the game here is against budget. Our charges for services are down and our operational expenses are also down. We had a budget of $554,000 through the first quarter in water revenue. We saw an actual revenue of 324, almost $325,000. We did have some increased capital expenditures in the first quarter in, in water. Otherwise, overall operational expenditures are down materially as we can, you know, A, you know, just bump some expenses out and not make some purchases that we otherwise would. But also there are some things, you know, as far as chemical and things like that, that we just don't need to purchase when water usage is lower. Next slide. Sewer is the same story. Overall, we, in the first quarter, were running about $340,000 below budget in revenue. Most of that being in charges for services. We saw expenditures, operating expenditures in sewer roughly half of a little bit less than half of what was budgeted in first quarter. You'll see bond principal, the majority of the bond principal in the sewer department is in the treatment plant bond, which is not payable in the first quarter. But again, since we annualize our budget, excuse me, annualize our budget, we wouldn't have expected to pay any bond principal in the first quarter. But so that's just something to make note of. So overall, when we looked at first quarter, our, we ran a deficit in sewer. But again, we, we budget to run a deficit in sewer in the first quarter. Next slide. Electric fund is much the same story. In, in, you know, the uniqueness of the electric fund, of course, is that we pay for what we sell in terms of purchase power. And purchase power was down. Our expense, expenses and purchase power was down significantly. And our charges for services were also down materially in the first quarter. And again, you'll see that again in second quarter. And I should say that, and I'm not going to put the personnel budget committee on the spot here, but this is a conversation that, that we've had with the personnel budget committee throughout the summer, as we've looked at budget. And I know we've, you know, the council has, you know, in, in the abstract is aware of, you know, these revenue deficiencies. And it's, it's the same story in both Q one and Q two. So nothing else materially of note in the electric fund. Next slide, please, Rich. Here's like the community center. The community center, of course, we, we, we do budget some property tax money. And we actually didn't receive any in second quarter yet for the community center. That'll come in in the October and November settlement. But sorry, there's a two geese about 50 feet over my head right now. Overall, you can see charges for services in the community center being down about 30% of where we budgeted them in the first quarter. And overall, operating expenses similarly down in that 30, 35% range for the first quarter. Again, we, you know, most of the, as we've talked about it from a budget standpoint in the community center, most of our expenses are in people and utilities. And, you know, some of those expenses are effectively fixed, but there are a lot of areas in which the community center staff have done a really terrific job of, of saving some money. When things have broken down, we've, they've been able to shave some money off of expense by fixing it in house, by helping things last a little bit longer. So kudos to them. And continuing to, to work on, on marketing the, the services that the community center offers. Next slide, please. So overall, that's a lot of, that's a lot of numbers, I know, but it's, I don't, I suspect that none of this is much of a surprise to anyone. Overall, no surprise to anyone. 2020 was a challenge for all of our funds. And we're seeing some interesting challenges this year with utility revenues. We did establish some new funds for tracking expenses and servicing our new debt. We have been shifting capital plans significantly to account for overall decreased revenue in our enterprise funds. All this being said, because of some of the expense shifts that we're, that, that staff are actively working, I can say that, you know, overall, the financial health of the city is in, in good position. We've been able to, the debt that we've been able to take on has been at really incredibly low rates and, and in line with our long term plans for, for service rates and things like that. And as with the Q two financial report, there's no action required upon the council tonight. The only request is that the council accept the financial report for the first quarter. Are there any questions on Q one before we head into Q two?
Anybody? Any questions for Director Ruby?
Should we move to accept this one now?
Is this a voting action, Mr. Krueger?
Accept it.
Okay.
Correct.
Very good. So at this time, we'll accept any motions to accept this first quarter financial report.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Lozy.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Kroban. Any other discussion, comments, concerns? If not, all those in favor?
Hi.
Mr. Sullivan?
Hi.
Anybody opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. Moving on to Q two.
Mayor, the, a couple of things that are of note here in, in Q two, we'll kick off with the general fund. As I mentioned earlier, happily, the general fund cash balance recovered quite nicely in Q two in part from March to April, due to the EDA's reimbursement for the Main Street right of way purchase. And then also with the tax settlement that we received as expected at the end of May and early June. That, that we again, expect every year and allows our kind of annual trend line as we look at previous years to, to follow as expected. Again, we continued normal operations within the general fund throughout the second quarter. That being said, with the general fund as well as our enterprise funds, we continue to look really aggressively at our capital purchases with staff to make sure that we are, are staying in line with what our projected revenues will be in all of our funds. Next slide, please. Thank you, sir. Thanks, sir. Again, we received our first property tax settlement in the second quarter, end of May, beginning of June. The second bullet here is actually erroneous and I apologize for that. The, the ARPA funds or the American Recovery Plan funds did not arrive $214,000 until July. So I got a little bit ahead of myself in that. So we'll see that with the third quarter financial report. And again, the, the ARPA money, the federal government allocated money to the state of Minnesota. The state of Minnesota allocated money to municipalities, townships and counties. And our overall receipt is somewhere in the neighborhood of $406,000, of which we received $214,000 in the third quarter. So that $214,000 is not included in these dollars in second quarter. It's simply, it, it's a bullet point here, it should not be, so I apologize for the confusion. Overall, through the second quarter, our overall revenue is, is looking positive, slightly over budget in terms of revenue and slightly under, under budget in terms of expenses owing again to the city operations attempting to be as lean as possible in the environment in which we currently find ourselves. And again, we do see some increases in some areas such as the city administrator's budget, which is not just a city administrator. A lot of our expenses for citywide operations, general fund operations flow through the city administrator's budget for things like one-time annual subscription fees. Next slide, please. Here's our lovely cash balance by fund report. One thing of note between the first and second quarter is we had an influx of cash into, in the second quarter, namely through property tax settlement. But also in the second quarter, we received the bond proceeds for our 2021 A Main Street and Water Tower bond. The EDA, the EDA has been issuing some revolving loan funds, revolving loan fund dollars to a number of local businesses, primarily though, primarily those currently in the mall space, but also some, some other local businesses. And so the EDA began to make some of those disbursements in the second quarter, driving some of their year-to-year difference in, in cash on hand. And the community center continues to see decreases in fund balance from a year-to-date and a year-to-year standpoint. Overall, we are, as a, as a city, a little over $4 million north in cash from where we were at the beginning of the year and $11 million north of where we were cash on hand at the end of June 2020. Next slide, please. Our water fund is the same story as it was in Q one. Overall, charges for services being under budget by about 170, 170, I almost said 170 million dollars, excuse me, $170,000. Overall, operational expenses also materially under budget, which puts us in not a necessarily favorable position, but overall, we are still over, doing better than budget in, in our, our water fund. I will note that you'll see $5.2 million of miscellaneous revenue through second quarter of 2021. That's money that is earmarked for the, the new water tower. So those are bond proceeds that flowed into the water fund for, for the, the construction of the new water tower behind the fire hall. But that, that inflow of cash notwithstanding, the water fund did see an, an overall slight surplus or excess of revenues over expenses in, in the second quarter. Next slide, please. Sewer fund is again the same story. $340,000 plus thousand dollars under budget in terms of charges for services. But we continue to see operational efficiencies and a decrease in capital expenditures, which led us to roughly a million dollars in, lower in expenditures in the second quarter versus budget, which is helping our, you know, overall position in sewer through the first half of the year. Next slide, please. Electrical, we can, we continue to see lower utilization, which is, is a trend that we continue to see into the third quarter of the year. As you'll note, our purchase power is our greatest expenditure in the electric fund. And that coincides to a great degree. Our decrease in purchase power expenditure coincides to a great degree with our, our decrease in charges for services in electric. Next slide, please. The community center. So as I mentioned earlier, the, through the first half of the year, we budgeted just over a quarter million dollars in property taxes being committed to the community center. The community center property taxes actually will not come in until the October or November settlements. So at this point, there's no concern over, or the, the tax shortfall. The community center, the concern again is overall decrease in charges for services at the community center. 149,000 versus a budgeted $212,000, or excuse me, the 212,000 dollars year to date. But as with our other areas of operation, we're decreasing capital and operational expenditures to, to, to offset the, the decrease in charges for services. So we're seeing overall a deficiency in the community center of $234,000 year to date. Next slide, please. So in summary, the name of this is the challenge to our enterprise fund revenue, which again, staff is, is active, we're actively managing that with staff. And as we discussed at our budget meeting, excuse me, last month, or earlier this month, excuse me, we, we are, you know, have modified our preliminary budget for 2022 in accordance with the trends that we're seeing so far this year with our enterprise fund revenue and the corresponding enterprise fund expenses. Significant activity continuing in our major funds that are related to the, our bonded projects, which is good and exciting and is tracking, which is good. And as with the Q one report, there is no action required or requested here of council, simply an acceptance of this financial report. The Q three, we've got three more days of the third quarter here. And our hope is with, with audit and adjustments out of the way, the hope would be that we would present for acceptance the Q three report at the second meeting in October. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Roby. That was quite extensive. And thank you for not piling two of those on us in October, just the one. So anybody have any questions for Director Roby?
Thanks, Joe. Very thorough. Appreciate it.
Nothing. Otherwise, I would ask the council if, if anybody wants to make a motion to accept the order to financial report.
So moved.
Second, Sullivan.
Thank you, Mr. Swanberg. First, Mr. Sullivan and Mr. Lozey were chiming in together with seconding it. So any other discussion, comments, concerns? Otherwise, all those in favor? Mr. Sullivan?
Hi.
Anybody opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you, Mr. Roby. Very good and, and good health to you and your family.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Council. And I hope to see you in person next time.
All right, very good. Moving on to the added agenda item on six D, that'd be council members' board and commission appointments. Mr. Krug, are you still with us?
I am.
You want to review that with us, please?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor Kirby, members of City Council. Rich, if you wanted to just move it to the next slide, I can make this very brief. So with the resignation of Liam Mahoney, there are some vacancies where city council members are appointed to various boards and commissions. Those being the Planning Commission Liaison and Recreation and Park Advisory Committee Vice Chair. There is also a city council ex officio position on our PAC. And we'll, I think we'll just wait to designate that once that vacancy is filled. So what we're looking for tonight and, and these, this has been discussed with these members, so they're aware that this is happening, is a motion appointing Scott Schleder as the Planning Commission City Council Liaison and Marvin Sullivan as the Recreation and Park Advisory Committee City Council Rep as the Vice Chair. So basically moving those two people into that, those positions temporarily until we get that city council vacancy filled. And once we get that vacancy filled, the mayor can look at kind of qualifications of that individual and kind of move them around to, or move them around to different positions as, as they feel fit and make recommendations to the council. So likely, I think we're still on pace to evaluate those applications on the October 11th. So there could be another kind of reshuffling of these city council appointments sometime on that October 26th, 25th meeting. So we're looking for a motion tonight just to kind of get this dialed in so that council member Schleder and council member Sullivan kind of know their role in those different boards and commissions. So I'll entertain any questions if, if there are any.
Any questions at all? If not, we'll move right into the motion. Some requested actions ahead of you up there. Motion, anybody?
Second.
Lozey, thank you, Mr. Swanberg. Thank you, seconded. Discussion, comments, concerns before we take a vote. All those in favor?
Hi.
Mr. Sullivan?
Hi.
Anybody opposed? The ayes have it. Moving on.
It looks like I have some remnants from the last meeting. Rich, if you want to just go into the, this, yeah, that, that one right there, the agenda item seven. Sorry, sorry about that.
Before we hit any adjournment, we'll just ask anybody if they have it. That's what we want to do. Comments, reports of any appreciation. With our council members, we'll go through these rather quickly. Councilmember Krugman?
I don't have anything, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Lozey? Nothing tonight. Congratulations on the new baby, by the way. Councilmember Mahoney? She's, she's no longer with us. Excuse me. Councilmember Schleder?
At the September 15th HRA meeting, less the chair, the board approved putting an offer out to Melissa Huntington. We also requested that Chair Huntington resign from the board if she accepted the position. And I do have Mark's resignation letter from the board. So we have a new director on the HRA and the mayor is going to be appointing someone to fill that position with the council's approval soon.
That he will. All done? Moving on to, who do we leave off for? Mr. Schleder, Mr. Sullivan, are you still with us?
Yep, I have nothing tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Swanberg.
Nothing tonight.
Myself, I have nothing to share tonight other than congratulations to both Mr. Krugel and Mr. Lozey with their new family members. So I want to wish you both well with, with your, your new babies. So with that said, Mr. Krugel, you want to end with anything? He may have checked out already.
I was muted. Sorry. One thing, we have a Personnel and Budget Committee meeting on Wednesday at 2:00 PM. And we're going to dive into some of the enterprise funds. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Very good. So that said, any motions to adjourn? All those in favor? Oh, we don't want to forget Sullivan. You there too?
Yep, I.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, everybody. We'll see you in a couple of weeks.